Good evening and welcome to the November 12th regular Town Council meeting. Let's start with a Pledge of Allegiance, please. Chairperson Phillips?
Present.
Counselor Sims?
Present.
Counselor Wildacross?
Present.
Counsel Pratt?
Present.
Counselor Gagnon?
Present.
Counsel LeVoy?
Present.
Counsel Seagull?
Present.
And for the acceptance of the minutes of the October 1st regular Town Council meeting and the October 1st special Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
I second it.
All right. Are there any changes or discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas. All right, at this time, before we do the swearing in of our new Town Councilors, I'm going to let our outgoing two Town Councilors talk for a few minutes and then we'll go around and if anybody wants to say anything, back to you or we just want you to go, but we'll see. Okay?
Probably.
Okay, go ahead.
Want me to start?
Sure, go ahead.
This will surprise everybody because I don't have a big, long list of things to talk about. Mostly, I want to say thank you to the folks who trusted me with this job for the last six years. It's been a privilege. I don't know that I've done anything more interesting in my whole life, other than raising children. Anybody who thinks that they, that things need to be different, if you don't speak up and if you don't volunteer, things will never be different. So, and sometimes, there were times when I thought things should be different. I found that it's not easy to make that happen. So, there's a lot of work to it, but it's very rewarding and I hope lots of people will decide to take a chance, put your name out there, and get to work. Sign up for committees, get involved that way. You'll learn the process and how to work your way through the system. I want to thank all the people who sent me emails and took time to phone me when they had matters that they wanted to talk about because, again, if we don't, if this panel doesn't hear from you, then we don't know. We can't just imagine stuff. So, thank you again. It's been a privilege working with each one of you. It's truly a joy and I'll miss everybody a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I was sitting around thinking of things that I wanted to say and just kind of did a stream of consciousness here, so bear with me. In 2000, or sorry, let me back up. When people ask why I decided to serve or do anything else, the key reason is I was duped into it, basically, to start. In 2015, Mike Finney called me. He was the then Council of the Chair, sorry, Chair of the Council. And he asked if I'd be interested in serving on the Planning Board. I told him I didn't know much about it, I'd be interested in looking into it, and two days later, I got a call from Lori saying, "You need to come get sworn into the Planning Board." So, there I was. Next thing I know, I'm at the October meeting, serving on the Planning Board. Served on that for four years and got thinking, "Hey, maybe I want to do the Council. I could change the world doing that." Sadly mistaken, six years later, here we are. But, so I decided to run in 17, lost badly, severely badly, to Counselor Phillips and Counselor Shepherd. Absolutely got hammered at the polls. Didn't think I wanted to run again, was afraid of being a lame duck, and Counselor Shepherd called me and said, "Hey, I think you should run. I think you could do it. I think you'd be good on it." So, as always, I listened to Counselor Shepherd because that's what I do, I listen to him. I ran, here we are, six years later. My son was five and my daughter was three. My son's now 15 and my daughter's 13, from when I started serving for the town and to This hasn't been an easy decision to not run again, but being a father and a husband first is important to me and that's where I want to be at this point. With that said, I couldn't have done this without the support of my wife Nikki. She's the glue that holds our family together. She drove our kids to basketball games, to track meets, and was home with the kids to take care of them all the time while I was doing this journey. And I can't thank her enough. I also need to thank the past and current Council for listening to all my harebrained ideas. Well, they might not have always made it, made it past an item, they were always listened to and thoughtfully considered. I would also like to thank the Town Manager and Town Staff for providing me the information requested, even though it wasn't always the information I wanted. And then, I guess, I want to just leave you with two quotes that stuck with me over the years. First one's from Sean Moody, "You don't get to be the tallest tree in the forest by cutting the rest down." Those are words I've lived by pretty much the whole time I've tried to do this. And then the second is, "If you're the smartest person in the room, find a new room." And I don't know who said that, it's just always stuck with me. So, what I'm trying to say is play nice, have discussions, even if sometimes those discussions aren't comfortable. It's the only way to make true compromise be achieved. And again, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Thank you to everyone in the town for well wishes. And I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, I'll start it up. And I'll group you both together. And I'll keep it brief. I just want to thank you both for serving. And like you said, Jenny, you don't really know what this entails until you sit up here and have to do it. I think we were all kind of coerced into it at the beginning, but anyways, I just wanted to thank you both for your compassion, your professionalism, and just your heart. You truly care about this town of Gorham and it shows, and I thank you both for your service.
Anyone else?
I'll echo the same. And I've only been on for a year, but I've learned from both of you. I think those are some wise words you shared with us tonight and it's really important for us to get up here and be able to share our differing opinions and come to a better, a better solution from working together. And I think that's a great example for us all, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, when I first started on the Council, the day after, Counselor Pratt called me. Is it, uh?
Is this?
Can you all hear me? Yeah, day after election, I got a call from Counselor Pratt saying, "Yeah, you're seated next week." And I'm like, "What? What happened in January?" And it was very helpful, even just understanding what our places really as counselors and the work we put in. And then, right after that, I reached out to Jenny and I said, "I need more information. I still have no idea what's going on." And I met with Jenny and both of you were incredibly helpful in helping me get an understanding of this, well, of this position. And it's, it's, it's really been sitting with me that the local level is really where, like, real change happens and like, real, like, bipartisanship, non-partisanship, like, we just, we, all of us care about the town and we want to do right by the town. And I definitely learned that from watching you two and I really appreciate everything you've done for, well, myself and the town as a whole. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for your service, Lee. I remember when you joined the Planning Board and watched you throughout the time and even when we worked together for COVID and scrambled for days on end to figure out where to help the town and the school reopen the schools. And I really appreciated that, that time that we had together for it. Your leadership then and you, you looking outside the box is what made you special on the Council and I really appreciate everything that you've done over this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess I'll echo the comments that everyone else had, but also just wanted to let you know that I'm going to start an annual blood drive here in Gorham and it's going to be called the Lee-Pratt Please, Please, Please Donate Blood Drive. So, I think that's going to be my outgoing message.
You missed a please there, but yeah, that's fine, yeah.
And Jenny, I hope to see you around town because I know you're going to be involved in something, you know, so.
Who here, Gorham?
Yes, there we go. So, and now I have plaques for both of you. And we'll do it down.
Thank you. Oh, I want to move.
For the 2025 Town Council, Chairperson Phillips?
Present.
Counselor Sims? Counselor Kusch?
Present.
Counselor Willis?
Present.
Counselor Gagnon?
Present.
Counselor LeVoy?
Present.
And Counselor Seagull?
Present.
Item 2024-11-1, action regarding the election of a Council Chair for the 2024-25 year, administrative sponsor. Proposed Order 24-145, order that the Town Council elect Suzanne Phillips as Chair of the 2024-2025 year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Seagull. All those in favor? Seven yeas. Item 2024-11-2, action regarding the election of a Council Vice Chair for the 2024-25 year, administrative sponsor. Proposed Order 24-146, order that the Town Council elect Rob LeVoy as Vice Chair for the 2024-25 year.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Sims. All those in favor? Seven yeas. Item 2024-11-3, action to consider adopting Town Council Rules, administrative sponsor. Proposed Order 24-147, order that the Town Council adopts the same Council Rules as the 2023-2024 Town Council Year. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Gagnon, is there a second? Second by Counselor Kusch? All right, any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may. So, last year and somewhat the year before, some of the Council rules have not been followed, as well as some of the Charter requirements. I want to make sure that the Council Chair is enforcing the rules and that all Councilors are abiding by the rules as well as the town. Otherwise, why vote on the rules?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I do have one amendment that I guess I will pass out to everyone, that I wanted to make to the Council Rules. It's just in Section 2 where we talk about our meetings and when our items are due for the agendas. And it's basically just editing the date from being due on the noon of the Wednesday before the regular meeting to actually two weeks before the next regular meeting. So, the reason I'm doing that, it's mostly for individual Council items coming from Councilors. This will give staff more time to prepare. If there's anything that comes out of committee, that's fine, but notifying the Chair and the Town Manager two weeks, even if you have an idea of an agenda item, it doesn't have to be solidly written, just that we know we can start the agendas. And that way, staff can possibly get the agendas out to us actually earlier than they have been. So, if anybody has any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I may, where it says, "Resolve shall be filed in the office of the Town Manager" and Council Chair?
Yep, we can.
Please add that as well. I'd like to make that amendment.
All right, so there, so if we can.
Because you are in charge of the agenda.
Correct. So, I have, I was making a motion to amend the Council Rules to say this, so I need a second for the proposed.
I will second.
Okay, Counselor LeVoy. And so, if we can vote on that amendment and then we'll take up Counselor Gagnon's amendment. All right? Yep.
Sorry, so you briefly mentioned this, but I just need clarification. What if the monthly committee meeting happens later in the?
Yeah, this is just for the individual counselor items that staff needs to prepare for. If there's a committee meeting the week before the Council meeting, that, that item can get on there, that's fine.
Does it say that here?
I think it's implied.
Yeah, I think this is just because we don't. It says Counselor Sponsored, that's what. So, there's no, so it's not talking about committees. All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Seven yeas. All right, Counselor Gagnon, your motion is to add?
And Council Chair to the amendment.
Okay.
So, it would read be filed in the office of the Town Manager and Council Chair.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor LeVoy. All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Seven yeas?
Excuse me, Counselor?
Yes.
I was not facing my hand.
You were not?
No.
Okay. All right, six yeas. All right, so all those opposed? There you go. All right. So now, the item as amended. Does anybody need any clarification of what it's been amended to? Are we good? Okay. All those in favor is the item as amended. Seven yeas. And so, now at this time, we are going to open the meeting, now that we've got that business out of the way, to open public communications. This is a time in the meeting for someone to get up and speak an item that is not on the agenda. We just ask that you keep it to three minutes, let us know who you are and where you're from. And we have a timer that'll show you when your time is up.
Hello, I'm Suzie Duchaine, for those of you that don't know. Chrissy Wood or Chrissy Mitchell is with me tonight and I've actually been helping Chrissy with getting her project through the processing of her. Which was not an eye-opener to me, but certainly is to her. So, we came to this board over a month ago now with a project which was 75% over 55, so addressing kind of no burden on the schools, addressing affordable housing, yada yada. I thought we had pretty good support from the members that I had talked to, even though my engineers received a phone call from Tom Coria saying the Council didn't support the project, prior to me coming to you, by the way. Anyway, at that meeting, I had no support to even take it anywhere and was later told that the town's attorney advised that this board couldn't vote on it because it didn't meet the comprehensive plan. First we heard of it was that night. I looked over the town attorney's opinion, that I did finally receive a week or so later. Any other information, I was told I could get through freedom of information. Somebody couldn't just hand me an email like any normal place would do. You had to go through all of this. That took two weeks to get. Anyway, we did, we did receive the opinion. It basically, it was just what someone was directing someone to say. It was up to this board to decide if you could vote on it or not vote on it. I mean, the comprehensive plan was pretty clear that if you were in harmony with the existing uses in the area and it was something allowed, or something allowed under the underlying zoning, then the board certainly could. They did with the Hanson Project right up the road. But you weren't given that ability to do that because you were also shut off. So, I don't even feel like it only affected us, it affected you as well. So, I, like I said, I think it was the best subdivision for the project, I still do. She's not going away. They've lived here for 44 years, owned a business here for 44 years. They've been five months getting a building permit. We have, she applied for a building permit in the rear back in July, was, did everything asked of her by the code enforcement officer. He was in line to give her the permit, once again, Tom Coria, who we were told was his boss, that he had to go along with what he had and not what he had was, there wouldn't be a permit.
Mr. Shane, you've had three minutes, if you.
Has it been three minutes already?
It has been three minutes. If you could just.
Okay, so I guess there is some information and I can provide it to you through email, if that makes it easier. But I, I think this board, if they do nothing else, needs to take a good, hard look at who's running the town. Certainly isn't the Town Manager, because I didn't get a letter back from him, I got it back from Tom Coria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hannah Hamblin. A lot of you guys have seen me here before. I will try to be brief. I want to start by welcoming the new Town Councilors. Congratulations on your election. So, according to Gorham's website, the Town Charter that you guys just swore to uphold grants the Town Council all powers to create, change, enact, amend, or repeal rules, ordinances, or resolutions relating to the town's property, affairs, and government to preserve public peace, health, and safety. So, I am a member of a local community group represented by a bunch of people back there in the corner, all raising their hands, that is concerned about the impact of quarries and gravel pits on the public health, or excuse me, public peace, health, and safety. Just so you know, quarries and gravel pits are open pit mines. The first extracts rock, sand, and gravel from bedrock formations, the second extracts loose material like sand and gravel from glacial deposits. That extraction involves blasting and crushing rock, which releases microscopic dust particles. Like wildfire smoke that we all see coming down from Canada, these particles settle locally and can travel enormous distances. They can cause heart attacks, aggregate asthma, decrease lung function, and increase respiratory issues. Long-term exposure can lead to cardiovascular issues like heart disease. That's if it doesn't include silica. If it does, which about 45 to 70% of our rock does in southern Maine, it can also cause silicosis, emphysema, chronic bronchitis, lung cancer, and kidney disease. Shock waves from the blasting may damage foundations, wells, and infrastructure. We recently learned that Maine requires a peak particle velocity remaining below 0.75 inches per second anywhere more than 5,000 feet from the blasting area. However, cracks and above-ground damage appears on people's homes at 0.5 inches if theirs are made from plaster-on-lath houses, which is most houses built before like 1950 is built with plaster-on-lath. So, that's about 24% of houses in Maine are built with materials that are being damaged while working within the regulations of the state. That's not to mention that 0.75 is the threshold for more modern houses to start being damaged. So, even if the quarries and gravel pits in this town are adhering to state regulations, science shows us they are damaging people's homes. We do have quite a few other concerns and I'm not going to list them all out here for you today, for brevity's sake, so just wanted to say that now, more than ever, protecting human health and the environment and ensuring the future of humanity falls on states and municipalities. I know I'm almost out of time, so just wanted to say, the only aggregate extraction experts in this town right now are the owners of these gravel pits and quarries. Obviously, we'd like to change that, we'd like to work with you in order to do so and to ensure that the regulations in this town are protecting our citizens. So, we call on the New Ordinance Committee members to expose the quarry contract zone that will allow an expansion and to work with us going forward. Thank you very much to those of you who are leaving the Town Council today for working with us and let's keep it up. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak, seeing no one else get up? We'll move on to Counselor Communications. This is a time, just reminder to the Councilors, to give committee reports and, you know, public service event information out to the rest of the town. So, I'll start on my right-hand side with Counselor LeVoy. Go ahead.
Nothing to report.
All right, Counselor Sims?
Thanks, I do have one thing to report. I'll keep it, my comments as brief as possible, just a minute or two. Last month, Scarborough's Town Council passed a resolution by a six-to-one margin that withdrew their town's support for the Maine Turnpike Authority's proposed expansion of a five-mile, four-lane elevated toll highway that would carve through both Scarborough and Gorham. Scarborough's leaders have clearly stated that they do not want this turnpike expansion due to the negative impacts of similar highway expansions, which are well documented in communities all across our country, destroying natural ecosystems, damaging public health, and worsen quality of life for local residents. Similar highway expansions commonly have a negative impact on the long-term fiscal sustainability of impacted communities because the sprawling expansion does not generate enough property tax revenue to offset the town's increased costs for servicing that emaciated pattern of development. Can't pay their rising property taxes with time saved on a daily commute. I have yet to see plans with numbers attached to them to demonstrate how the highway will help our town's property tax challenges. To the contrary, the highway will drag down property values all around the area because no one wants to live next to a highway. We have to stop prioritizing through traffic at the expense of our own residents. The good news is there are more sensible alternatives, less destructive solutions, which could be implemented sooner. And we don't have to wait another 20 years for this enormously expensive project to finally come together, despite the growing opposition from the public, which includes an ever-growing coalition across the political spectrum. So, in closing, I encourage my fellow Councilors and fellow citizens to watch the recording of Scarborough's September 18th meeting with the Maine Turnpike Authority and the Maine Department of Transportation. Both organizations are available for Gorham Councilors to contact if we have any questions regarding this matter. And I am eager to share the information that I have researched on this topic as well. I urge my fellow Councilors that we should make it a priority to consider updating our Council's position on this proposed highway expansion in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Gagnon? I'm going to switch this up and make the two new people go last.
Keeping me on my toes.
Sorry, Counselor Seagull, I forgot about him. Sorry, go ahead.
I thought you were jumping back.
No, no.
Thank you, Counselor Willis. Thank you, Counselor Chair. I just have two, two items here. The first one is that there are currently two open seats on the Library Board, so the Library Board of Trustees, one of our best boards in the town of Gorham, has two open spots. Please apply. All the information should be on the town website. And then, our new Appointments Committee would love to meet and interview all of the applicants. It's a great way to give back to your town and to learn a whole lot about libraries that you probably didn't even think about. The other point is, and surprisingly also about traffic, so the way that you reduce traffic is by removing cars from the road. If you look at 25 at 5:00 PM and you look at 25 at midnight, no traffic at midnight because there's just less cars on the road. Putting people on the bus puts less cars on the road. You need two people. You need two people on a bus to suddenly be having less traffic. So the more we take the bus, the less traffic there is. Now, all of this being said, I get to share something that I have, my entire time on the council, never been able to share. Last month, South Portland decided to join Metro. Because that happened, Gorum actually now pays less for our portion of Metro. Do you know how rare it is for me to tell people this actually costs less than we expected? I never, ever get to say such a thing. So we are actually, as a town, saving $42,000 because South Portland joined Metro. So that is very, very exciting, and I think in, in an era of increasing infrastructure costs and everything getting very, very out of hand, having an entire bus service that can take you from Gorum to Portland, that only costing $127,000 is actually an incredible deal for us. So I will probably not get to say that ever again during my tenure. So I'm very excited to share that and share that with fellow councillors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now it's your turn, Councillor Gagnon, sorry.
Thank you. I want to say congratulations to the Women's Varsity Volleyball Team for winning their second state title, back-to-back title champions. This is Title Town USA at this point. Congratulations to all involved. It's a very exciting sport to watch, and if you haven't watched it, I recommend going. It's, it's a great crowd, high energy, and it's great for town of Gorum. Congrats to the new councillors. I wouldn't have wanted to weather a presidential election and had to see and sit through all the throngs of people, but it's also a great time to meet your constituents, so congratulations and welcome aboard or welcome back, right? So we had two bonds go to referendum, one for $9 million that passed and one for $2.5-ish million that failed for new tennis courts. I think the council has to come back to the school department and ask, one, a postmortem of why we feel that those tennis courts failed, whether it be the location, the cost, a mix, or something else. And two, what we're going to do about it and how that's going to impact the school's future plans, which I think the superintendent has already indicated in her blog about re-kadencing her capital improvement needs. So with that, last but not least, taxes are due. Please pay your taxes. I won't say if any local politicians haven't, but please pay your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kush.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you to Laurie and all of the election workers and the Public Works people and the public service people that were out and about and made sure that we had a safe election cycle. And I'd like to thank the voters that came out, over 70%. Go Gorum. If you happen to find any Kush signs by the side of the road, you're welcome to bring them to Narragansett Street and I will put them in my garage. I did try to pick up what I had, and I'm very excited and looking forward to working on this side of the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Willis.
I would echo the thank you to Laurie and the staff. I thought that day went exceptionally smooth, and thank you to Gorum Police and some of the other Gorum Town staff that was there. This is a position I've been really excited about, so thank you to the voters for giving me this opportunity. I hope to repay your trust over the next three years as a part of this council. I didn't expect butterflies, but I have them, so bear with me as we sit up here for the first time. Two quick things I wanted to mention during the month of October that I had a chance to do. Thank you to Gorum Rec for their Halloween at the park that happened right here, able to bring my family to that. They had an awesome experience. It was a really special day that the kids enjoyed and looking forward to their kind of glow-in-the-dark parade that will be happening here, the light parade that will be happening in December. Also had a chance to participate in the Food Pantry Thursday. I had never had an opportunity to serve at the pantry before, but found myself leaving with a deep respect for the work that they do twice a week to help our, our community. I also had a chance during that time to learn about Shelby Zainer. Shelby passed away recently. She was a dedicated member of the Food Pantry. She, she almost never missed a Food Pantry opportunity to work. She'll be greatly missed by the Food Pantry and this community as a whole. We're filled with plenty of people who volunteer in a very public way, but also by a lot of people who give back quietly behind the curtains, and so thank you to Shelby and all those people who do that.
Thank you. I'm just going to keep it brief and say welcome to Janet and David, and we'll move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to echo job well done to the town clerk, her staff, her volunteers, Gorum Public Works, Gorum PD, and our VIPs for all their efforts in the election. I think if anybody has anxiety about a national election and that process, you know, can you imagine being in the, the shoes of a town clerk and the staff, having to handle that election and have the trust of the public handling that election? So again, I want to thank them for their job well done, and as always, we have full faith in, in their abilities to handle that process. Want to thank real quick the Baxter Memorial Library for their Halloween event, as well as Gorum Rec and the volunteers that have done the trunk-or-treat events in Gorum. We also wanted to mention that our pedestrian lights are now up and running on South Street. That was funded through TIF funds, as well as a matching grant from the MDOT for village improvements, and I want to thank the contractor and Public Works for getting that done before snow flies. Tree lighting, December 1st, starts around 4:30 with some activities before then. More information on the Rec Department's website. Winter sand is available. Yes, it will snow someday. That's at Public Works, two buckets per storm. And we do have a parking ban in effect for the winter months on public roadways. Again, it will snow someday. We don't know when that will be. Could be tomorrow, could be three or four months from now. So, thank you.
And now the school committee report.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah Perkins. I'm currently the chair of the school committee. So, pretty light report this month. The election results, several of my items have already been brought up, so I will go over them briefly, but just congratulations to Eric Thistle and Nicole Yeo Fisher, who were elected to the Gorum School Committee. As was mentioned regarding our local referendum bond questions, the question regarding the relocation of the tennis courts was not approved, while the question regarding the expansion of the high school cafeteria, Phase 1 modular expansion at the high school, and Narragansett HVAC system was approved. So we'll be working together as a school committee and with the town council to determine next steps on these. A reminder, we're beginning budget kickoff season. We give ourselves, what, two months between budgets? So we are going to be kicking off the FY26 budget development season this Thursday, November 14th, with our annual dessert and discuss meeting. We want to extend a special invitation to members of the town council to attend. It's a great way to learn about the big-ticket items that we'll be needing to consider as we build the FY26 budget. That will take place on the 14th at 6:30 at the high school library and is also open to the public. As was also previously mentioned, congratulations to our high school volleyball team, who won their second straight state championships a few weeks ago, and congratulations to our other fall athletic teams as well for making the playoffs and representing our community so well. A shout-out to the high school theater students for their incredible production of the crucible this past weekend. And coming up, we will be having Bingo at the Middle School, sponsored by our seventh graders. That'll be this coming Thursday at 6 o'clock. Everyone is welcome. Those 55 and over can play for free. And then just an update on our coming meetings. This month's school committee workshop meeting will be held on Tuesday, the 26th of November due to the Thanksgiving break. The workshop will begin at 7 o'clock, and the Policy and Finance and Facilities Committee will meet prior to that at 6 o'clock. That will be at the Village Elementary School as we continue our school-based rotations for workshop meetings, and we'll tour the facility prior to the meeting, or, excuse me, at the beginning of the meeting. And as always, feel free to reach out with any questions. I've included my email and my cellphone number on the report. That's all I had.
All right. Any questions for, go ahead.
Just clarifying, tomorrow night is a regular school committee meeting?
Tomorrow, Wednesday, is the regular meeting, and Thursday is the dessert and discuss.
Okay, and the regular meeting's right here in council chambers?
Yes, at 7:00.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah.
All right, thank you.
Item 2024-11-4. Action regarding the appointment of members of various council committees for the 2024-25 year administrative sponsor. Proposed Order 24-148. Order that the town council appoint the following people to the council finance committee, Rob Lavoy, Chair, Janet Kooch, and David Willis. Ordnance Committee, Seven Segal, Chair, Phil Gagnon, and Lou Sims. The Appointments Committee, Seven Segal, Chair, Janet Kooch, David Willis. The Economic Development Capital Improvements Committee, Lou Sims, Chair, Phil Gagnon, Rob Lavoy. Representative to Greater Polton Council of Governments, Lou Sims. Representative to EcoMaine, Seven Segal. Representative to the Jetport Noise Abatement Committee, Phil Gagnon. Representative to GPCOG Metro Regional Coalition, David Willis. The Joint Fiscal Sustainability Committee, Lou Sims and Rob Lavoy. And the Metro Bus Service, Seven Segal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councillor Segal. All right, we did this at an earlier meeting, so any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2024-11-5. Action to consider sending to the planning board a contract zone for Erin Flatt for an agritourism venue at 64 Flagy Meadow Road, Councillor Phillips sponsor. Proposed Order 24-149. Order that the town council forwards to the planning board for review and public hearing a concept for recreation of an agritourism facility located at 64 Flagy Meadow Road.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councillor Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Willis. All right, hold on, I get used to that. I'm like, what am I saying? Because I looked over and was like, councillor Pratt, no. Okay. So yeah, I brought this item up. You guys have a pretty good description from Mrs. Flatt about what she wants to do on the property, and it actually meets all of the activities on here, are things that are in our agritourism ordinance. So the only reason this is coming forward is because it is not allowed in that zone. So I think we can have the town manager explain that better if anybody has any questions. So that's why we need a contract zone for this piece. She is also here tonight if anybody has any questions about what she'd like to do on her property, so. Any questions? Go ahead, Councillor Segal, yep?
I know we've talked about changes that we might be making to our own zoning and our own agritourism. Is it possible that if we kind of make these fixes, that a contract zone isn't necessary, that we can remove the contract zone?
So, good question, yeah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think if I understand the question correctly, the contract zone goes through, goes through the process. Eventually, the zone is changed to allow for these uses down the road or parts of the zone or the comp plan or something. Yes, as long as the, the individual that we have the contract with is agreeable to that, they could dissolve it or amend it with the town if it's no longer needed in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Councillor Gagnon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I guess, inquire, I don't really have questions about the contract zone per se. I just want to treat all contract zones equally. Do we have councillors that went door-to-door? Do we have people, you know, sending this to ordinance at all? I'm just trying to get a, a grasp on consistency from why we're treating some contract zones a little bit more judicious than others.
Okay. I think that for this, for this contract zone, because, you know, for me, the reason that I asked to send it to planning board, I mean, we can amend it to change it, to send it to the ordinance committee, but I didn't find that there was anything that needed to be discussed or worked out, but that's, that's just me. So, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the only thing I would say is, as far as a contract zone goes, this would be a fairly straightforward contract zone. We've had ones in the past that are much more complicated, or projected to be much more complicated. This is just, is not allowed in this zone, and for a, from a procedural standpoint, it would be a faster process for the potential business to go to the planning board versus some contract zones. We really have to get down into the weeds on the technicalities, but the council can send it to ordinance, the council can send it to the planning board, that's entirely up to the council.
Councillor Sims?
Just to clarify, the process here will be that it'll go to the planning board and then back to us one more time?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor? Seven ayes. Thank you.
Item 2024-11-6. Action to consider authorizing the use of a public road for private easement, Councillor Phillips sponsor. Proposed Order 24-150. Order that the town council authorizes access for access of a private way off the public road of Lily Lane, providing that the public access and use is maintained. The developer builds access off Lily Lane on the town right-of-way to the standard acceptable to staff, and be it further ordered that the developer and future property owners will be responsible for snow removal, abutting the town's maintained roadway unless an easement is provided to the town of Gorum, acceptable to the Public Works Director by which snow can be adequately removed and/or stored.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councillor Willis. So this was brought up at a prior meeting, we needed more information. I think we sort of tabled the item, and then it's come back a little bit different than we saw it the first time, but I think everything, all of our questions were answered in this order, and I'll ask the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this was for, or tabled from your September meeting, if I remember correctly. The questions at the time or concerns were coming off of a public way, were there adequate, you know, areas to store snow? Would it hinder Public Works efforts to clear the roadway, create more issues down the road? So the applicant, as well as the applicant's engineer, talked with Public Works, and I think we've written up an order that, although there is a little uncertainty as, as far as the build-out, that allows the Public Works Department to have the final say, to make sure that public access and public snow removal efforts on Lily Lane are not infringed upon down the road.
Thank you. And just one, I guess, clarifying point, we're not extending the road. We're just allowing, so anything after our, our road is not going to be any longer?
That's correct, and, and for the sake of new councillors too, the, this has become more common where there's a access for a private way or another development off of an existing public way, so the council is kind of the gatekeepers of that. So you are allowing access over the public easement essentially that comes off of the end of this public road and saying, yes, assuming you go to the planning board or whatever town approvals are needed, you can build this road and, and travel over it as long as these conditions are met.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councillor Boye, go ahead.
Just going to say that that was my biggest concern, was the snow plows, but since it's being addressed, I'm, I support this.
Thank you. Councillor Segal, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just nervous about this. We've, I know before I joined the council, something very similar happened and I had a feeling less than adequate for the town. My concern is just removing this, basically removing a public right-of-way removes a lot of potential access for anything the town might need in the future. Like this, this is my concern, is we're kind of giving something away almost permanently just by having this built here.
Okay.
When I think about Trail Connection, when I think about just what Gorum might look like in the future, this feels like we're, we're just cutting ourselves off, just because...
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have any public land in that area, so...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, so the, just to clarify, the council, as far as public easement and, and public access that you have right now, you will not be giving any of that up, you will still maintain that. I think that the larger issue that you're pointing out is when some of these subdivisions or private ways are accepted or adopted, we may need to look at how they're laid out for the future, because typically we have these hammerhead dead ends, things like that, and the access is off of them, and then that creates snow removal problems, turnaround problems, and, and issues that I think as far as a process is a larger issue for us to look at if properties are going to keep extending off other properties, if that makes sense.
Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Council Gagnon, Council Segal.
Item 2024-11-7, action to consider investigating ways to improve access to the Husky Line, Council Sims sponsored. Proposed order 24-151, order that the town council asks the capital improvements committee to investigate ways to improve accessibility to the Husky Line, and to better utilize multimodal transportation opportunities as a catalyst for economic development in and around our village center, in other growth areas, and be it further ordered that the capital improvements committee reports back to the county council with any recommendations.
Is there a motion? Move by Council Sims, is there a second? Second by Council Cooch. All right.
Thank you, just a couple of brief comments. In fiscally sustainable communities all across planet Earth, public transit networks serve as a wealth multiplier for municipalities and their residents. Gorham has yet to fully embrace the Husky Line and our membership with Greater Portland Metro. Gorham now has two seats on the GP Metro Board, and we need to utilize those positions to engage with metro leadership and make more effective use of this remarkable opportunity. While there is already a decent level of ridership on the current Husky Line, we could be making far better use of our metro transit options. Every additional person that gets on the bus in Gorham reduces the amount that the town has to pay to Metro for our annual membership, so it is clearly in our best interest to make the Husky Line more accessible to more Gorham residents, and that's why I'd like our capital improvements committee to work with the town staff to identify improvements, and then work with the staff to move the request forward to GP Metro. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, go ahead, Council Gagnon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to hear that our $170,000 annual investment into the Husky Line has been reduced by $40,000 roughly, because, you know, South Portland has joined, however, that's still an investment annualized every year that we have not even been updated on whether we're doing a marketing campaign, outreach campaign, how we're looking to increase ridership. I was at the same workshops that I think most, I guess, I can't say most because we've got new people here, but I was at workshops where we have de minimis ridership. USM uses it primarily, but not many other places in Gorham do. Some people do, not, not enough to justify the expense, the, the cost of it is supposed to be with a mix of ways to entice people to actually use the bus service, so I would want to hear from the town manager first, before I vote on this, what has been done by the town, as was directed to the town in our investment, it'd be, because it has been six months if, or more, since we've voted on that, roughly.
Thank you, so as I understand the question, what, what's, what is different, or what has the town done to promote ridership?
Why don't we start with marketing? What is our outreach that we've done in the last five, six months that we're looking to increase ridership? That was one of the things that other councilors have asked for with our investment into the Husky Line.
Specifically, GoCam, I believe, is working on, or has worked on, a promotional video to go over the app for Metro and get that out there, but beyond that, the marketing has not been aggressively targeted, we may have done some Facebook posts and things like that, but as far as aggressive scheme to increase and promote ridership, not that much in the last six months.
Since we've, and that's... And I'm not, I'm not harping on this, I'm just saying, we've invested in something that we haven't even touched on, and we're already talking about expanding and looking to take next steps. For me, and I guess, I'll take a moment for my opinion on it, which is, let it rest, and let's get a plan forward to get ridership there, and know where people are targeted by the town, before we start looking for rapid expansion into something that I don't even know if, is going to continue, if ridership doesn't go above the, I can't remember, was it 25 a day, 25 people a day that were riding it? Very de minimis number that weren't USM, so I just want to make sure that the town is actually doing what we asked with the money that we put with it. I'm not saying I don't want busing, but if we're going to have it and be ridiculed that nobody's riding it, let's at least, you know, put the effort forward.
If I could just respond to some of that, my, that's the whole reason I'm making this motion, because I want to work with the town staff to get greater ridership, and I'm not talking about spending more money, I'm talking about things like making slight changes to the bus route that could actually help get more ridership. When I ride the bus, there's actually, it's, it's almost completely full every time I've gotten on it, so I actually, I've, I've witnessed more ridership than I think some realize. I think one of the biggest problems is that, to, to get more people using the bus stop, you have to have the bus stop closest, closer to peoples, where people live. The, the way you're going to get more people using the bus is to have more residences within a walking distance of the bus stops, so I'm not going to get into the weeds of some of the suggestions I have, that's for the committee, but yeah, I mean, and let's, 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 let's be tracking the data more closely, by all means, I want to be tracking it, but I think it's, it's also a development tool, I mean, you know, putting the, you know, putting, you know, more efficient housing near the bus stops, that's how you get a, a positive return on the investment for the annual membership, you're generating more property tax revenue than you had before, that far outweighs the annual fee, so that's the, that's the long-term goal here, and, and so that's some of the stuff I want to talk about more at the committee. But definitely tracking, try, keeping a close track of the data, we need to keep a track on that, we need to make sure we're getting a return on investment, and if we're not getting enough return on investment, let's make changes to improve it.
Council Cooch, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I was just thinking of following along with the idea that we've talked about issues possibly with parking at USM, and parking at Hannaford, and if that's an issue, so it seems to me like this is appropriate to go to the committee and talk about, I mean, I know there are also talks about designated bus lanes and things like that, but we have a couple of stops, we have that sort of random, to me, stop, that's over by what used to be Ocean Gardens, so it just seems to me like there are things that could be looked at, and then, in addition to, however, I mean, looking into, doing the studies takes money generally, too, so, I, I mean, I, I support this.
Thank you. Council Segal, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I do want to acknowledge that because we are a member, we can now do things like this, the, the ridership is the way it is because it was set up to be, I mean, USM was the one footing the bill for the entire time, so it was set up to be a USM bus, really, and now that Gorham is officially a member, we can now say, okay, so if this is our line, where is it, you know, where is it going to stop, how can it change so that we can actually have more ridership for people that live in this town, so that's, that's what, part of what comes with being members, and the other part is also, I mean, the, the amount that we're talking about compared to how much actually a bus costs, or a full-time bus driver, we are absolutely coming out ahead even just on that, if we were to, I mean, have to offer this service in any other way, and we are talking a lot about, you know, how we can make this better, as it produces traffic, and, and the buildout of the town, but this is also a, just a service that is good for government to provide, there are people in Gorham that can't drive, this gives them an opportunity to get into Portland, this gives them an opportunity to get to jobs, this gives them an opportunity to, to get places so that they, if they move out here, they're not stuck, and so that's also, I, I think, an important thing, I just want to acknowledge that we're able to do with this.
Thank you. I think that when we get into some of these discussions about sending things to committees, I'd like to make sure that we're going to see like an action item come out of this, so, and from what I'm hearing from Council Sims, is you want to have recommendations that are going to come back that we actually make back to Metro.
Yeah, yes.
Like changes to increase ridership and to get the most bang for our buck, or however we want to...
Yeah, at the very least, like some, some, some changes to the, to the route, for example, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't, it's, we don't just discuss the Husky Line and things like that, I just want to make sure that we come out of committee with some action items back for us to talk about, so. Go ahead, Council Gagnon.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think there's a little bit of distortion here into what I actually said. We have a representative to Metro, it is now Council Willis, his job is to go there and to do most of the stuff that we've just discussed, and then bring back to the council and say, we either need a workshop, or we need to go to, we have not even taken the steps to, as a new member of the Metro with board positions, suss out what we can and can't do, whether we can move the bus from Main Street to Hannaford, like Westbrook has, right, or other things, so it frees up traffic. I'm looking at this and saying, there's a redundancy happening here, and is, are we asking for Council Willis to now come to every SIPs meeting, and economic development committee meeting, so that he can properly represent what we're asking back to Metro, or to investigate?
I think that Council Segal is on the Metro Board of Directors.
Yeah, oh, not who? I thought it was you.
I'm the GP cog.
Oh, oh, whatever. So, yeah.
No, I see what you're saying.
Subo Willis for Segal, sorry, you know, it's, it's getting late already, but it, these are the things that I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble with, because then Council Segal has to come to all of our committee member meetings, and then same thing with the town. Yeah, I mean, locally for the town, we definitely can say, where's the marketing, where's your campaigning, have the economic development director, certainly, but for us to say that we're going to have this robust change, I, I think this is too broad of an item to discuss, frankly, so I'm not, I'm not in support for that. Bus, certainly, I think it's just too broad, so.
Thank you.
Chair Phillips.
Yeah, go ahead, Council Segal.
Yeah, thank you. So there's, there's a little bit of confusion, because there is the GP cog metro regional, and then Metro, the, the entity, so as, as our representative to Metro, along with Director Poirier, no, I don't need to go to every SIPs meeting, I, I think the goal here is, and I can tell you that Metro would be very excited if we said to them, hey, we had our capital improvements committee meet, and they, they made some recommendations for some stop changes, I think there's some really, really small changes that we can recommend that would increase ridership, that I think you all, I mean, I trust, you all know this town very well, and know where there are people that might take the bus, so I just see this as, give us some recommendations for changes we can make that we think will improve ridership, like actually pretty simple stuff, and then I'll bring it to Metro.
Yeah, and we could, you know, we could certainly give a, a month or two, or however long is needed for another, you know, you know, the, our metro representatives, you know, can put their heads together, have a couple of specific, more specific suggestions when we actually have this agenda, and come to the capital improvements and economic development committee meeting, and I, I'm viewing this one more as a economic development meeting side as it, I'm not necessarily looking at like capital improvements here, but, but, yeah.
Council Lavoy, go ahead.
All right, well, I'm part of this committee, so it'll come to me at some point, and I'm going to be, yeah, I support the bus, but what do I know about the bus lines and how they operate? Shouldn't that be, you know, to, to Council Gagnon's point, shouldn't that be, Council Segal? So I, I do think it's redundant, and as far as marketing the bus, I mean, there's no better marketing than seeing a bus stop at a bus stop, and seeing people get on and get off, I mean, there's not much more you need to do.
Thank you.
I have a point of clarity, to be honest, and I, I'm not going to be disa, I don't know what Council Segal's role on the Metro is, and whether he's authorized by the council to change anything without a council order.
No, I think...
Like if we wanted stops to cha, I don't, I don't know how that works.
Nope, so I think what, I think what Council Sims is saying is, if the committee met, had some ideas come back to us to fully vet it out at the council level again, because it would be a recommendation back to us, and then if we make a decision, we would forward that on to the Metro Board, is that my understanding, and say, please, representatives, take this to the board, this is what we want, so, I just, I was bringing up the idea of the action items.
I mean, I don't want to be a, a policy wonk here, but I feel like we have to like, draw out what the responsibility of that is, because it's new to me, I can't go to the jet port noise abatement and say, stop flying planes, Gorham wants you to stop flying planes, I don't have that authority, so maybe we need to kind of write that out a little bit.
Thank you. All right, any more discussion? All right. All those in favor? Five yeas, all those opposed? Phillips, Gagnon, and Lavoy.
Four yeas.
Yeah, sorry, I'm like, forgot to tell myself.
Item 2024-11-8, action to consider instructing the capital improvements committee to examine cost-effective street safety improvements for the Gorham Village, Council Sims sponsored. Proposed order 24-152, order that the town council instructs the capital improvement committee to investigate cost-effective solutions to improve street safety in and around Gorham Village, to thereby catalyze net positive economic development in the village to include bicycle advisory lanes, temporary bollards, flex, flex posts, and other practical interventions with demonstrated success in other municipalities.
Is there a motion? Motion by Council Sims, is there a second? Second by Council Gagnon. All right.
Thank you. So, tried to be as specific as possible while leaving, you know, room for the committee to discuss, this is one of the most cost-effective efforts we can take as a town to improve our economic development prospects. Safer streets are proven to make a place more desirable, and thus creates a virtuous cycle of additional investment and more productive land values in those areas, thereby mitigating our town's property tax challenges. We don't have to wait for a huge project or a lengthy grant application to start improving things. Improving street safety will result in improved quality of life for Gorham residents, creating more viable options regarding multimodal transportation. Many parents don't feel safe allowing their kids to walk or bike to school, and this is unacceptable. If we can make it safer for more kids to walk and bike to school, then we could actually save money on our school budget transportation costs, and our village will become more walkable for all residents as a result, and I recognize we only have so much money to work with, and that is why I'm focused on identifying cost-effective solutions that will provide the best return on our investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead, Council Gagnon.
I hope this encompasses the Libby Ave connector for the Cross Town Trail.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2024-11-9, action to consider instructing the ordinance committee to evaluate a vacant abandoned buildings ordinance, Council Segal sponsored. Proposed order 24-153, order that the town council asks the ordinance committee to evaluate a vacant abandoned building ordinance and report back to the town council with recommendations.
Is there a motion? Motion by Council Segal, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. By Council Willis, all right, go ahead, Council Segal, go ahead.
Other neighboring municipalities have vacant buildings ordinance, and I thought it was about time that Gorham looked at it as well, so, that's all, I'd just like to send along to them.
All right, any other discussion? Go ahead, Council Willis.
I guess my one concern about the language that's sort of in there right now is better clarifying what defines a vacant building, and how that's handled process-wise, so just to note that if it does go to ordinance, take a good look at exactly how we define that, and what that means moving forward, is that a foreclosed property, is it a property that's in foreclosure, or is it just a property that's not currently occupied? I think there's a big difference there.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? All right, five yeas, all those opposed? Gagnon, Phillips. Gagnon, Phillips.
Item 2024-5-8, action to consider proposing amendments to the fire suppression system ordinance at the regular December 2, 2024 Town Council Meeting, Councilor Siegel sponsored. Proposed Order 24-154, order that the Town Council schedules a public hearing and vote on December 2, 2024, to amend the fire suppression system ordinance as recommended by the Ordinance Committee as follows.
Councilor Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading due to its length.
Yep, is there a second? Second by Councilor Kush. All those in favor of waiving the reading? Six yays. All those opposed? One, Gagnon. All right. Who's teeing this one up? Is this you? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the council may recall, at the Ordinance Committee, there is a item pending for the fire suppression systems ordinance, sponsored by Councilor Pratt a couple of months ago, to look at distances between structures as possible exemptions. At the same time, and I think has been the general direction to town staff, is if we can find a way to look at an existing ordinance, find redundancies and/or requirements that seem more aggressive than they should be, based on real-world experience, to help developers, business owners, residences, to bring those forward. So, I think the Ordinance Committee looked at recommendations from staff, which you have here, acknowledged that that was a separate item, so that's why it's being sponsored separately. It is a standalone ordinance, so if the council decides to move these changes forward, you'd have a public hearing at the next meeting, and vote to change it. But I'll probably miss some things, but essentially what it's doing is weeding out a lot of these redundant components. It's increasing the threshold for value, so if you renovate a property, it used to be 50% of the value, triggered the sprinkler systems on an old building, now it's 75%. Getting rid of some redundancies on fire doors that didn't make sense for contractors. I might have to call Tom up here to help me through the rest of it. But essentially taking out some of the, oh, homeowner inspections of properties. So, you have your own sprinkler system, there was a component that the council put in there several years ago, that you could do your own inspections. We found that that doesn't work, it's not liked by the citizens, and is not productive. That is being recommended to be pulled out of there as well. So, you could have it done yourself, you could hire a contractor to do it, but we're no longer recommending that. And the Fire Department has not been aggressively enforcing that the last year or two. So, again, these items would be forwarded to your next meeting if you vote to move it along. There'd be a public hearing, and then a vote on it, and then, again, town staff's here to answer any more specific questions you might have.
Okay, so, at some point in the near future, we're going to be discussing the other piece that you mentioned earlier?
That is, that is still at the Ordinance Committee meeting. I think the last meeting was taken up with one item, it's expected to be on the coming meeting, I believe.
All right. Go ahead, Councilor Lavoie.
Yeah, just a point of clarification to the Town Manager. Under Article 7, under exemptions, the accessory apartment that is 800 square feet, I don't remember if that went through.
I knew somebody would see that. We, we just realized that very recently, that that was published in the ordinance, it was an error, it did not go through, it will be corrected, so it's just going to be cut out. This was copied off of the town's version. To my knowledge, that has not been applied anywhere. But that was found, and brought to my attention by the Fire Chief, which will be corrected by the next time the council votes on this. And if you don't vote on this, we still will correct it.
Thank you.
Can I, I'll just share a comment. I think these are practical improvements, based on the staff's learnings from the interactions and putting it into practice. I think the measures should generally, they're going to help reduce housing costs moving forward, while still taking fire safety seriously, and so I support the measure moving forward.
Okay, so just, I forgot to take a motion on the item, so we just need a motion a second on the item. Sorry, I just was speeding through, so a motion by Councilor Siegel, and a second. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think there's some irresponsibility in here. I'm not a real proponent for the fire sprinkler systems, but in one section here, attached garages, if there is no living space above the garage space, a two-hour wall and a one-and-a-half-hour fire door, including the jams, is now replaced with a 20-minute fire door. With the now inclusion of electric vehicles, and if there was an electric vehicle fire, you're telling me town staff now wants to go from an hour and a half fire door to 20 minutes? You ain't getting out of that house. I'm sorry. I say send this to ordinance, and go over it a little bit better, considering we already had one councillor endorse it. I mean, let's be a little bit more responsible with this. I owned an electric car, you know, those lithium batteries go pretty quick, so I guess I'd make a motion to send to ordinance for more revisions and discussion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second, to send it to ordinance? All right, do we want to vote on sending it to ordinance first, and then continue our discussion?
So, I just want to inform the councillors, this was at ordinance, and we did discuss it. Councilor Gagnon, you were absent from the Ordinance Committee meeting, but we did go through each and every item on here. And I suggest we ask the Fire Chief, as he was, he had input on all of this right now, but we already did what you are saying, you were just not present for it.
And if I was present, I probably would have caught this in other things, but, you know, it is what it is.
All right, so there is a motion and a second to send this to ordinance, so we'll vote on that. All those in favor of sending this back to ordinance? All right, two yays. Gagnon and Phillips. Five opposed. All those not in favor? All right, so a motion fails to send it back to ordinance. So, I guess on that note, I'll explain myself. I think that there's some things in here, while I appreciate the reduction of rules and things like that on the fire suppression ordinance, because I didn't support it to begin with. I was hoping to have another, maybe, discussion around this, and maybe it becomes a sponsored item at another time. Whereas we're looking at some reductions in another part of the ordinance, about the distance from another home. I think there's a lot of stuff going on that we're looking at in reducing this ordinance, and maybe I'll just suggest at a later time, that we talk about this, and talk about the value of the ordinance as a whole. So, I would just put that out there. That's just, although I am in favor of reducing requirements for this, I think maybe it turns into a larger conversation another time.
And just, just to clarify, in the process from here, we're sending this, it'll come back to the council again in another month or two for a public hearing? That's the, yeah?
So, there's still some opportunity to discuss further.
I think my point was, it's irresponsible to send something forward that has material and life-threatening issues in it.
Thank you. Councilor Willis, go ahead.
Is it appropriate to ask the Fire Chief to comment on the 20 minutes for those of the last ordinance committee meeting, which I believe this happened at, is, am I correct? Was the last one, was not recorded? Was it two ago? Okay. I have not seen Fire Chief's comments on that, and I'm curious about the 20 minutes versus the hour and a half, so.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we can have the Fire Chief up here. The one component I want to throw out there before he speaks on it is, they, the Fire Department is in the business of public safety. So, that is, the Fire Chief, and if he does not recommend the highest rating, he's not doing his job. So, I think the questions will be, and what I would like him to get at, is why staff have looked at this change, and the logistics behind it, and then what are the pros and cons for the council?
And I might just add, as he's coming up, everything in here, it's the, it's the minimum standard required. If someone has an electric car, and they want to, and they have concerns, they can certainly add additional fire suppression to their garage, if they so choose.
I clearly support the two-hour wall and the hour-and-a-half door, don't get me wrong. I will also say that the history of any electric car is, you cannot put those fires out. What that two-hour wall does, in that hour-and-a-half door, it gives us two hours, hopefully, or less, to get some of the belongings out of the person's house, before it burns flat. Because no amount of water do I carry, nor do the DEP recommend that we put the fires out. They are recommending that we let them burn, better for the environment, and the whole shooting match. We've been getting a lot of kickback from all of the contractors, because they don't realize the two-hour firewall is there, and they build their house, and they can't add four layers of sheetrock, or they realize they put the wrong sheetrock, and then they have to put this two-hour insomniac paint on, in order to gain the two hours. If you do a true two-hour wall, it's got to go completely isolate the garage from the complete structure, whether there's living space above or below, doesn't matter. It's just, you've got to make that two-hour encasement. The new electrical standards on National Electric Code clearly dictates, in the new version, that you have a 60-amp outlet in your garage for future charging of electric When you buy an electric vehicle, I believe in the owner's manual, it tells you to charge them outside. So, we have contradicting pieces of the puzzle. It also states, in the new electric code, you'll put a 40-amp circuit breaker to the roof of the house, in order to accept solar panels. So, now you have 100 amps taken off from your 200-amp panel, because of these codes. I don't recommend ever charging a car in the garage, because I can't put the fire out. I don't care if you have a 10-hour wall, I cannot put that fire out. And a lot of the contractors, they're browbeating us because of a two-hour wall and a 30-minute or 20-minute door. The difference between the 20-minute door and the hour-and-a-half door is the casing that's enclosed, and the metal sheeting on the door. There's not much difference. It's when they buy the wrong product, and they install it, and we catch it in an inspection. And if you look at, not only my fire codes, but look at the IBC code, you probably have to have the same thing.
Thank you. Councilor Sims, go ahead.
I think, thank you, Chief, that's very helpful. I think that, you know, the point about the electric cars, I was just going to say electric guitars, because I play one. But I think that, you know, I don't necessarily think we should be penalizing all home builders. There's a lot of them that don't have electric cars. Maybe we need to look into some sort of ordinance, specific to electric car charging, I don't know, that might be another thing. But I think that, I think that what's been proposed here, is that I think it's worth continuing to move it forward, but I think those concerns around the electric cars, you know, we need to keep thinking about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
Just being new here, and somehow missing a little bit, can you clarify, we're looking at this part of an ordinance, and looking at another part of an ordinance, or a whole ordinance? I'm confused.
Thank you, excellent question. So, the original item that was forwarded to the Ordinance Committee was to, which is still there, and has not come back to the council, was looking at possible exemptions for sprinkler systems based on proximity from other property, other buildings, whether they maybe be on the same property, or, the concept, I think, being you can't burn down another building, if you choose not to sprinkle, based on proximity. At the time, and what we've been trying to encourage with the staff, if there's a efficiency to make an ordinance more business-friendly, or developer-friendly, that passes the straight-faced tests in areas, try to bring that to the elected officials at that time. The Ordinance Committee identified, and I think rightfully so, that this was outside the scope of what was sent to them, hence why it's back tonight.
Thank you.
Chair Phillips? Thank you. As the other councillor with an electric car here, I think we should move this along, but I'm open to hearing this. We still have room to make amendments, but I think, you know, slowing these things down, we don't need to, but I'm still open to hearing this. And might as suggest everyone else in town just lives across the street from the Fire Chief, it works perfect.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, that we're sending this for a public hearing at our next meeting, and we can still be changing it after that, or things can happen after that. So, I would encourage people to actually give us comments. I know coming to a public hearing, maybe not, but maybe emailing us your thoughts on these changes. So, I've received some comments prior to the meeting from some people, but I think that if we hear more from the public, we can make a pretty good decision about this. So, I'm okay with moving it forward, I guess, so. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Six yays, all those opposed?
Item 2024-8-11, action to consider a zone change to map 106 lot 46 in the Gorm Village, ordinance committee sponsored. Proposed Order 24-155, order that the Town Council forwards to the Planning Board for review and public hearing, amending map 106 lot 46 from urban residential to the McClellan-Samson House conditional zone.
House Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading due to the length.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims. All those in favor of waiving the reading? Seven yays. And now we just need a motion on the item. I'll get to that page, there we go.
Subpo.
All right, motion by Councilor Lavoie, second by Councilor Siegel. All right, so this was before us, it went to the Ordinance Committee, and, oh, if Councilor Siegel wants to...
Yep, just the, the landowner purchased the adjoining parcel, and would like to increase the property, and do something with it, but because of historical significance, this building has a very, very specific zoning associated with it, and so just wanted that lot to be included into this zone, so that it can all be treated the same, rather than having two different zoning standards. To the new councillors, if you look at the ordinance map, you will see, this one zone is a different color than the entire rest of the town. So, that's all we're doing, and we're excited to work with the landowner.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilor Gagnon.
Through you to the Town Manager. So, for this one particular change, how do we make it so that the applicant, I guess, here is able to do more, and be less restrictive than what is proposed in some areas here? I mean, the house, the McClellan house, where the dentist's office is, has to remain as-is, but do we need to have the other house that's there remain as-is, or can it be removed, demolished, or some other thing?
Thank you. I'm going to just acknowledge, I'm probably not the subject matter expert, also I'll be calling a friend, Tom Poirier, to come up and answer that question. But I think, generally speaking, because what the app, what the property owner is looking to do, it fits better into that district that was created for what's now the dentist's office, but Tom can speak to the specifics of that.
Yeah, so, I believe both principal structures on each lot are considered historic structures, so I think those are, even if you don't do anything, even if you change this, it's still in the historic district, and it's tearing down the building, it still get implications, and they have to go to Historic Preservation Committee. So, I think tearing down the historic structures to the front of the lot isn't viable, but could they remove the garage, and then do something in the back? Absolutely. So, there's things they can do there, but there is two historic buildings on... So there's things they can do there, but there is two historic buildings on each lot, one in each lot, so they're kind of, they could do things with them, but they just can't tear them down.
Any other questions?
It's telling that the owner is asking to have this historic preservation zone instead of the urban residential zone, which in their mind is more restrictive from what they want to be able to do. So, we're just getting in the way of letting the builders actually generate more property tax revenue for the town, so fully supportive of the request from the owner of the land here, and we should continue to try to be more cooperative and allow more development to happen in the village area.
Any other comments? Councillor Gagnon?
I'm supportive, but I feel there needs to be more flexibility, particularly with the historical district and what is considered is a historical building or not. It's old, does old make it historical, or is it the architecture and the architecture design which can be copied by a builder? So if they want to expand off the original McClellan House and rebuild something that's similar in style and scope, I'm okay with that. I don't think there's, unless someone tells me, and nobody has, there's any historical significance to that building. So, and you're the Historical Society President, so you would be the first to say there is.
Yes, and I said that at the ordinance committee meeting, that was my concern, was because all the buildings in the historic district, the reason that they're all listed in that group is because of either, what you said, the architecture or the date of that the houses were built, and that's why it's just a certain area. It's the South Street Historic District, and then we have one historic district that has certain conditions on it up by the college, so that was my main concern at the ordinance committee meeting, was that, you know, the tearing down of the structure or the maintenance of the structure, Historic Preservation Commission can review it if they want to do something to it, correct? I'm just looking at...
Yeah, so I want to clarify, it's just, they cannot remove the structure, they can significantly rehab it. So if you remember, the McClellan Sampson House, when the dentist's office bought it, was in severe disrepair when we owned it, right? It needed a lot of work, so the town looked to sell it, bought it, the dentist came in and really rebuilt that office from, really, the ground up, and put a lot of money and effort into rebuilding it. They can do that with that existing building on the other lot, they just cannot tear it down. There are certain things they can do, they just can't remove it. So they can build, add on to it, and do things, they just can't tear it down.
So, Madam Chair, I mean, we own as the legislative body here, the Historical Preservation Ordinance, so we can make changes to that to be less restrictive.
We can.
My philosophy has always been, if you want the architecture and the look, you can put that in the ordinance, doesn't necessarily mean the buildings that are there, there's a couple that probably could be torn down that are, you know, as you get to the center of town, I think it needs a discussion and look at, particularly if we've rezoned areas in the center of town, and we're trying to create more walkable density and everything else, you're not going to get that with keeping a single-family home, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep. Thank you. I guess, when I was reading through this earlier, it seems like there are quite a few outs, I mean, highly impracticable economically was more than once in here, so I feel like they would have the flexibility to do what was economically feasible.
The owners, and, how do you say your last name, so I can say it correctly?
Kush.
Kush, thank you. I think I put an extra letter in there every time, I apologize, Kush, councillor Kush. At the meeting, the owners did indicate that it was not economically viable to be able to renovate the interior of that building.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2023-2-7, action to consider reviewing zoning in the Gorham Village districts to increase economic development, ordinance committee sponsor. Opposed Order 24-156, order that the Town Council forwards to the Planning Board for review and public hearing, amending sections of the Land Use and Development Code pertaining to districts in the Gorham Village located under Chapter 1 as follows.
Council Chair? Motion to waive the reading due to length?
All right, is there a second? Second by councillor Sims. All right, all those in favor of waiving the reading due to length? Seven yeas. And motion on the item? Councillor Siegel? Is there a second? Councillor Sims? All right, so this came from the ordinance committee, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yep.
Town manager, if there's anything you can add afterward. This is, so this was a very comprehensive look at a lot of our ordinances, and changing, reducing, removing small things that just made it so that it was harder to build in our, you know, in our commercial area, in our village area, so that we can allow for, whether it be a bigger building or a building using the entire lot, because a, well, built on the entire lot is going to cost more than a building built on 75% of the lot, so thus we can get more property taxes. So this is all just helping increase economic development. Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think some of the key components would be, that I would touch upon, is parking setbacks, including maximum setbacks in some of the village areas, and as councillor Siegel mentioned, just a lot of items that were looked at to try to increase, or allow for the potential for productivity on some of these properties, especially in the village, our primary village district.
Any comments or questions? Councillor Sims, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually, I want to thank the town staff for their efforts, there's a lot of work here, lots of conversations at multiple meetings. We did have a meeting, I think the September meeting of the ordinance committee, we discussed some changes around, I think, just the setbacks, we also talked about the parking, the minimum parking requirements, which again is, you know, we're saying, regardless of what the landowner thinks about how much parking they think the market demands, we're telling them that they have to build X amount of parking, which does add cost, and generally negatively impacts the numbers if it's more than they think is necessary. So I do have one proposed amendment that I'd like to propose here. I'd like to propose that we replace its calls for 1.5 parking spaces as the minimum requirement for one-bedroom units, studios, and efficiencies. I would like to propose that we amend that language to say, no minimum requirement for one-bedroom units, studios, and efficiencies. The reasoning here, the more off-street parking we require, the less space remains for the actual buildings. The buildings are what generates the property tax revenue, the parking lots generate very little property tax revenue, so the more off-street pavement we require, the less property tax revenue we generate, and the more tax increases we homeowners have to shoulder. I've spoken to housing industry experts, and they have generally assented that these minimum parking requirements often pose undue burdens. These burdens add thousands of dollars to the cost of new housing. So we can allow the landowners to dictate how much parking they should include with their buildings based on the market need. And again, we're not saying they can't have any parking, this, what I proposed for the amendment, wouldn't say they can't have parking, it's just saying, we're not, as a town, going to require them to have one-and-a-half spaces for a building, for a dwelling unit where one person most likely lives. So, that's my proposed amendment.
Okay, is there a second for the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, second by councillor Siegel. All right, discussion on the amendment? Do they have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just comment, I'm in favor of a hard look at all of our parking requirements, I think this is a start, but in general, to councillor Sims' point, a contractor, developer, a business, they're going to make choices based on what the market is going to demand, and so by us saying we're not requiring one-and-a-half parking spaces in this instance, does not mean they will not provide parking spaces, that they will get to make that choice. So if they feel that they're going to need to provide one parking space for a one-bedroom unit, they'll provide it, if they think they'll need two, they'll provide that, but they'll make choices that will, they're for-profit ventures that are trying to sell these units, generally speaking, or put a business in there, and so I'm in favor of having them be able to make that choice.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the amendment? All right, all those in favor of the amendment? All right, six yeas, all those opposed? One, Gagnon. All right, any more discussion on the item as amended? I guess I'll chime in with my two cents, I actually agree with councillor Willis that I always like talking about parking or not talking about parking, there's been a long history of, we have too much, we don't have enough, all those kind of things, so I think maybe that's something in the future we look at, is our parking requirements, so I'd agree. All right, any more discussion? All right, seeing none, all those, go ahead. Councillor Siegel?
I'm just making sure, because this was, sorry, this was a very expansive look, and I'm just making sure everything made it, and I just...
After a call, the vote has been taken.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to go to the vote, I don't, you need to check and make sure everything's in there, or, because, should have read it beforehand, I guess, so...
Yes, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just realizing, but, okay.
Town manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the other thing I'd point out, too, this does go to the Planning Board, so if there's any tweaks, they can be addressed to the Planning Board, and they will come back to the council again, so, double-check and triple-check opportunities are there.
Thank you. All those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2024-3-9, action to consider incorporating a percentage of affordable housing requirements into the Land Use and Development Code, ordinance committee sponsor. Opposed Order 24-157, order that the Town Council forward to the Planning Board for review and public hearing, amending the Land Use and Development Code to provide for affordable housing as follows.
Council Chair?
Yep.
Motion to waive the reading due to the length?
Sure, is there a second? Second by councillor Sims, all those in favor of waiving the reading? Six yeas, all those opposed? One, Gagnon. All right, and do we have a motion on the item? Motion by councillor Siegel, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Sims? All right. Councillor Siegel, you want the town manager, or?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
I think it's a long time coming, we need affordable housing in Gorham, houses, the house prices, rent prices are getting out of control. This is a requirement that 10% of new units built when it's a subdivision have to be affordable. I think that's, we based it very similarly off of Cape Elizabeth, and in fact, I believe the deed restriction actually only lasts for, oh, yep. Yeah, so we, sorry, we base this off Cape Elizabeth, and it will get affordable housing in Gorham, which is something we desperately need.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add before we discuss?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. If there's any specific questions, I'll call up Tom, I mean, him and his staff worked very diligently on plucking components from different ordinances out there, including Cape Elizabeth, which was heavily based off of, but essentially runs with the property and is a requirement for subdivisions, 10 units or more.
Thank you. Councillor Kush?
I have a question, page three of nine, modifications and fees, it says for product, for projects with less than 10, and in parentheses, it's five, which is it?
Thank you, Tom can answer that, I'm pretty sure it's 10, and we were hoping that the Planning Board would catch that error. That's, that's actually, we put those in there just to make sure the Planning Board's on their toes when we send it to them, but I believe it's 10.
Is Tom looking, nodding?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, councillor Sims.
Yeah, I just add, you know, I think that I'm very much in favor of finding ways to make housing more affordable, based on similar ordinances in other municipalities, I think there's, there's definitely the jury is out as to how effective an ordinance like this really is. That said, I'm willing to support moving it forward, to go to the Planning Board and get the public hearing, to get some more input, and we can, you know, perhaps potentially continue to try to find ways to revise it in a sensible way that might make it more effective. So, you know, we're not taking the final vote on it tonight, I think it's an important issue, worth moving it forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, councillor Willis.
I'm going to be voting against this, going to planning, and I think the major, one of the major reasons why I'll be voting against it is I can't support inclusionary zoning for affordable housing, I'm for affordable housing, I think we have to find other avenues and ways to do it. A number of communities have tried this, my opinion from watching it, I think it's failed in some of these towns. To me, the affordable housing issue in Gorham has a lot to do with supply and demand, and I worry that putting this into place is actually going to choke our supply, because there are going to be contractors and developers who will not want to build in our community based on what these rules are. Also, on the deed restrictions, one of the pieces I think that should be a part of homeownership is accruing equity in your property, so that you have the opportunity to move your life forward. The way that this is written, from my understanding, we would actually be basically eliminating a homeowner's ability to get equity when the property appreciates and they're able to sell it in the future. So, I think it may give them an opportunity to own a home, but they don't get all the benefits of homeownership. So I have real concerns around this, and we'll be voting against it tonight, again, not because of the need for affordable housing, I fully appreciate that, but I just think there may be other ways for us to achieve it, so.
Thank you. Councillor Gagnon?
So, I guess a point of clarity on when it defines 50% and 80% of median family income of the poor, do we have, are we provided with what those figures are, and what, what that calculation would be for what could be affordable? Because that is not, I mean, you're not looking at much.
Thank you, I don't have that data handy at the moment, but obviously that would be a moving target based on the data collected for that area, or for our area, rather. It's, Tom, when you were pulling this together, did you have a specific, did you have an idea what that data produced, or is that based on the Cape Elizabeth model?
So it's a Poland-wide industry limit for salaries, so we can get the data, I mean, it's done for this area, we just need to pull it, and we can provide it. It's not done per municipality, it's kind of, I think, assessed for this region.
Yeah, so I asked that question, Madam Chair, through you to the town manager, because I have no basis to look at and say, well, if it's median household income is, say, $40,000, and you're not, you're not even touching a house in Gorham then, even if it's subsidized or well put together. And I'm a proponent for allowing affordable housing in areas, my mom was a recipient of that, so my mom was a single mom, growing up, and she was afforded a house in a nice area that I grew up in. She still owns that same house, you know, the equity in it is hers, she doesn't have restrictions on it, it will eventually, if she sells it, be her retirement. You know, did it afford me opportunities? It did. Do I think that it's awarded well, or solves all the problems? No, but I'll push it forward to go into the public domain to be heard, whether that allows me to vote on it or not at the end, I don't know, but I do feel as we discuss affordable housing and allowing people to have affordable housing, how do we get there, and how do we make it so that, not that it's equitable, or you just give somebody a place to live, but you take them out of generational poverty? And that's what you're really trying to do here for families. to do here for families, is to break a cycle of generational poverty. And you can't really do that if you penalize them on selling the house at the end. And that's the only crux of it that I kind of didn't care for, and not to share my experiences with it. But I, I do see the value and the merit in it. I just don't know if this is the right, right path or not.
So I guess I'll put in my two cents. I would agree, I mean, we need affordable housing in Gorham. I don't agree that this is the way we do it. As we talk about ordinances and things that we change, I'm always talking about enforcement. And so, how do we keep track of this? How do we make sure this happens? I don't know that we have any answers to that. And a couple of things, you know, about just, you know, the, I just want to make sure that this, when it's affordable housing for someone, I guess, I don't know who the onus is on for requiring it. I know we have deed restrictions, but I think we've seen that where homeowners have to enforce those versus the town enforcing those. So there are just a couple of different things here. But yes, I would agree. I mean, we definitely need to find solutions to affordable housing. And then I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of the process, that we're putting it towards the, to the planning board. They'll have a public hearing, they'll review it, and then it'll come back to us. So just so that people know. Any other comments? Go ahead, Council Siegel.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I do not think this is a perfect solution, and I can hear, I can hear that sentiment. However, I don't see another one. When we talk about increasing supply to lower costs, with simple supply and demand, you need to increase, you need there to be more supply than there is demand to actually get to cost lowering. And that is way more houses, right? The Maine Housing had that study that where, the state of Maine's 20,000 units down. So simply allowing more supply or reducing fees even, we have no guarantee that that will lead to affordable housing. And so that's why I reached the point of just a requirement, because this is the only way that we can guarantee affordable units will be built. And we can look at other towns, we can look at Portland and say, well, is, is that a failure? It got affordable housing built, right? There are currently zero affordable units in Gorham. And so this is just, this will guarantee affordable units are built. And so I, what I would like to suggest, what I've said at ordinances, let's move this forward, let's put this in place, and if someone else has a better idea, if someone else can show me how, a way that we can make sure affordable housing gets built in Gorham, totally okay with scrapping this and putting that one in. But I figure, start with something imperfect, just to guarantee that actual, that some affordable housing gets built here.
Council Lavoie.
I mean, this is, this is a tough one, and we're all up here, and we all agree that affordable housing is needed. Counselor Siegel, guarantee? I don't, you're not guaranteeing anything. Builders don't have to build here. If we put this into place, they'll go build somewhere else if they don't like it. And Portland's seeing that. But I don't like this. I don't think it's the right way to go about it. I'm hoping the planning board is watching. Maybe they can tweak it. And it's going to come back to us, so. Let's bring it out to the public.
Okay. Council Kush, did you have a comment?
Yes, two questions, actually, I guess, for the committee. One of them being, when it comes out of committee, is it a vote, or is it like, well, I guess, first of all, is it a vote for it to come out of committee? To put, to have it put on the agenda, like, two or, two or three people have to agree?
Yep.
That's my first one. And my second question is, it's based on draft language from Cape Elizabeth. Do you, do we have any idea how many surrounding towns are trying this, have tried this?
Inclusionary zoning, only a few. Portland, Cape Elizabeth, I think, are two. I mean, we could get a more comprehensive, but those are two in the surrounding area that I'm aware of. I'm not sure anybody else has. I think a lot of municipalities, we, we just put into state law, LD 2003, the requirements for affordable housing, the density bonus. So if, if you remember those, when we rolled out those standards, there was salary and identification as part of that, that, the same would be for these. So I think a lot of municipalities are waiting to see how those affordable housing, more carrot-than-stick works. We haven't seen it in Gorham, and I'm not sure how many other municipalities are to see if developers are taking advantage of the affordable housing bonus units. In order to, just for some councils, and the new councils, affordable housing, a developer can get was two and a half times the density that's allowed, if they do half of the units as affordable. We just haven't seen any developers willing to take up that, that kind of affordable housing yet. But that is the other part to this. So we have this part where it's a requirement for all subdivisions over 10, but there's also the affordable housing bonus units.
Thank you.
I would just comment, I think some of this, and Counselor Siegel, you talked about it earlier in the process, you know, there's a place for town government, there is also a place for state government and county government. And I think we need to work as a council with our state representatives, with our county representatives, because I, I do think it's going to take more than just Gorham to really solve this issue, that, again, you're specific to this plan. If we're going to send it to the planning board, which part of, the reason I'll be voting against it in terms of sending it to the planning board, is I don't want to take up their time, town staff time, on this issue, that I think unless it's like, almost wholly scrapped and rewritten, I can't support some of the deed restrictions that are, that are in play. You know, again, just to mention one, if anybody from planning is listening, the six-month restriction in terms of reselling a property, that I worry if we're helping somebody get into a home, circumstances change, they need to sell that home, they can't sell it within that six-month period, find a qualified buyer with these restrictions, they could be ruined. We saw this happen. I think it's easy right now for everybody to be stuck in the 2020 to 2024 housing market. That's not where the market was from 2007 to 2012 or 13, and that wasn't that long ago, historically speaking. So if we end up in a, in a point where days on the market become six months again, we could ruin a family that we had every good intention of helping by putting this into place. So I just think it's a really flawed plan that looks good in terms of putting it forward and saying, I'm supporting affordable housing. But I think it has some potential pitfalls when we actually put it into play. So I would encourage us as a, as a council to engage some of these other communities that have done it, hear the success stories, hear about the things that have gone wrong. I know North Yarmouth, or Yarmouth has spent a lot of time on this. They want away from inclusionary zoning and really trying to find a way that we can tackle the affordable housing issue. My two cents in a different way.
Thank you. Council Sims, go ahead.
I think the deed restriction point is a, is a really critical one that I really appreciate you raising. So I think that would be something that we should look at. If it, if it is voted to move forward, we should definitely look at the deed restriction component of it and see if there's a way that can be revised.
Council Gagnon?
So as other councillors have indicated, there's some downfalls. One downfall in particular is, if you sell the house, you don't get any, any of the equity. What happens if it goes down? You don't have the protection if all of a sudden you lose half the value of your property. So you're handcuffing somebody one direction and then saying, sucks for you, on the other. So that, that's one of the pieces. But Madam Chair, through you to Counselor Siegel, where are we on the affordable housing program that we passed as a council and you had sponsored to look to create? Because we're allowed to create a affordable housing authority, and I think that was like, two years ago, almost.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I said through you to Counselor Siegel. I didn't say to town manager. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counsel Gagnon is right, slightly. We have the power to create a housing authority. And basically, in talking to multiple municipalities and multiple other housing authorities, what came from that is, a housing authority hasn't been created in, in decades around here. We are within the Westbrook Housing Authority catchment. And really, what would, it's a massive, massive federal process with HUD to do.
Yep.
And all it would really land on is just that organization being responsible for sectioned vouchers in this area.
Right.
That's honestly all that would change. With all of the research done by town staff, it's, it's a very unfortunate thing. But that's what, if we were to go through that entire process, it, it wouldn't lead to more affordable housing.
Why? I, I guess, I'm, I'm confused, Counselor. You, you asked for a housing authority, as we're talking about housing here. You've had two years. Are you telling me that we're no, no closer to getting a housing authority? That's news to me. I thought we were in the process of doing all the HUD stuff and everything else.
I'm telling you, the, the motion was for, for staff to explore and research, putting together a housing authority, that research was done, and a lot of it was-
Well, it was never brought back to the council, so I'm, you're giving me a revelation here that we had a council order two years ago that we thought the town staff was working on, and you're telling me they're not? I mean, who authorized them to stop? It wasn't brought back in a workshop or the council? Through, Madam Chair, through you to the town manager. I mean, this is a very valid thing, as we're talking about affordable housing.
Thank you. So the, I believe, I'm going off memory here, the, the order was to have staff report back on the viability of establishing a housing authority. We just basically checked with the town attorney to find out what that process was, as outlined by Counselor Siegel. Generally speaking, for this item, my, my recommendations for the council is, if you wish to forward this concept as is to the planning board, give them specific direction, because they're a review body, not a policy body. If you want to make substantial changes to this, and want to keep it but modify major components to it, I would send it back to the ordinance committee to review. And then obviously, there's the other option, if you're not going to move it forward, you know, don't move it forward and look at something else. But I would caution against forwarding an item to the planning board and asking them to read between the lines on what the council's intention is, because it's just going to come back to you in roughly the same format, and probably not for a good result.
So Madam Chair, it just never came back to us, I guess, is the non-answer answer.
Well, the recommendation was to not create a housing authority, but we don't get to vote on it.
That brought back to the council, wasn't it, was it?
As an item?
Yeah, it wasn't. It was supposed to. So, because there's no dialogue or discussion if we wanted to go forward with it.
Council Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to ordinance. This item.
A motion to send this back to ordinance?
For further review.
Second by Counselor Sims. All right, discussion on sending this back to ordinance?
I'm, I'm fine and open to sending this back to ordinance for the people who are not for it. I would love to see what changes, because if, if every single one of you said, we need affordable housing in Gorham, I mean, for the people who work here, for the people who teach in our schools, they can't actually afford homes here, tell me what we should put in this so that we actually can have affordable housing in Gorham. So when I bring this back, everyone's on board and we can actually get it. Because what I'm, what I'm just scared of is just, how many more years? Right? Like, houses in Gorham are selling for like, 800K for a normal, just a normal house? I mean, that's, all right, I'm not as tapped into the market, but that's, I mean, it's just, it's getting outrageous. And my concern is, the longer we delay, the worse it gets. So please, I'm totally okay sending it back to ordinance.
Counsel Kush, go ahead.
To Counselor Siegel's point, I guess, I'm not in favor of sending it back to ordinance, because I don't support it. I mean, I think I've heard the arguments here, and I don't know what else we would gain by sending it back to ordinance. If, if the council as a whole sees it, to send it to the planning commission, that's one, the, the planning board, that's one thing, I guess. But I don't see any point in waiting any longer.
Okay. So any discussion on sending it to the ordinance committee? All right. So the motion is to send this item back to the ordinance committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four knows, me and the left.
Whoever they may be.
Yeah, the people on the left hand side. All right, so back to the discussion on the item. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor? Three yeas. Siegel, Sims, and Gagnon. All those opposed? Lavoy, Phillips, Willis, and Kush.
Item 2024-11-10, action to consider setting a town council workshop for November 19th or November 26th, Council Phillips sponsored. Post Order 24-158, order that the town council sets November 2024 as a workshop to discuss waste hauling options, as well as discussion with legal counsel on roles and responsibilities of elected officials.
Is there a motion? Motion by Counsel Kush. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I fill in the blank? Sorry, is that appropriate?
So we were just, the only reason I have two dates is to discuss with the council, I guess, timing-wise, because, which date they prefer, because this is an off month, where we, on the 19th, and then on the 26th. So this is just up for discussion of which date works better for everybody. It's almost like scheduling at a council meeting, but...
I would like to fill in the blank, if I may, to the 19th, partly because the 26th is already a school committee workshop.
Okay.
Regardless of people's holiday plans.
Yeah, it was also, yeah, I was thinking of the holiday, too, so. All right, so there's a motion to do the 19th? All right, second by Counsel Gagnon. All right, so all those in favor of it being the 19th? All right, seven yeas. And then we vote on it again? Even though there's nothing really materially different, all those-
What time of day? What time of night?
6:30, our normal, yep, our normal workshop time, thank you. And this is fine with town staff and scheduling?
We did check.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure. All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 46-8, action to consider accepting the Finance Committee's recommendation to increase certain fire and EMS fees, Finance Committee sponsored. Post Order 24-159, order that the town council adopts a revised fee schedule for specific fees within the Gorham Fire Department as follows. Ambulance mileage fee, $14.70 per mile. Basic EMS transport fee, $609. Advanced life support one transport fee, $825.25. Advanced life support transport two transport fee, $1,050.
Is there a motion?
No movement.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, turn this over to you.
Yes, finally, a Finance Committee item. But it's at the end of the agenda, so I'll keep it short.
Yeah, everyone has to review.
The, the fees, and it was determined, and thank you for, Chief Fickett, for getting all the data to us, it was determined that Gorham's fees were well below the regional average. So, but they're limited to increases, how much they can increase per year. So we're doing the 5% increase, and hopefully, I've asked him to review when we can do it again. Is it like a fiscal year, or is it January 1st? Can we review this again to do some more increases, to get them more on par with the rest of the area?
I have a question for the town manager, and you probably don't know this off the top of your head, maybe Council Bueno's. What's our collection rate? Is it getting better? Or, I thought, the last time I remember looking at it, like, the write-offs and all that kind of stuff, I thought our collection rate was getting better, when it had been. It's just a general question, it doesn't really-
I don't know the exact rate. The chief could speak to it. I would dare say that our write-offs have been getting better. And part of that is, nod yes or no, is how we structured the billing, which the council did that three, four years ago now?
Yep.
Yep. So I think we have been seeing that, that payment has been a little better on all fronts. And we also, we used to do collections in-house, now it's a third party. I'm sure that does factor into it a little bit, but it has been getting better.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, go ahead.
I think the common complaint I hear from people is, we pay for this stuff in our budget, so why are we having to pay again when we've already paid in our budget? budget, so why are we having to pay again when we've already paid in our budget? So, people feel it's a little gratuitous that when, when they're getting an ambulance transfer from their house to the hospital, they've already paid for that with their property taxes. So, so, a lot of people want, I guess, through you to the town manager, please explain to the people at home how this billing is outside of their property taxes? If the ambulance person has already paid and the bond for the ambulance is already on the rent rolls?
Thank you. So, just to clarify, our revenues for rescue and fire billing do not even remotely cover the cost of the service. The service primarily driven, is primarily driven by salary costs, apparatus costs, you know, capital equipment, requirements, medical supplies, all that stuff. To answer the question, just generally speaking, it is a industry standard, the municipalities, I know very few municipalities, I don't know of any municipalities that don't bill for a service in Maine. I'm sure there is one somewhere. And it's a user-based system. So, to use the system, you help offset those expenditures. Generally speaking, a common practice amongst municipalities to try to recoup some of that cost for that service.
So, if you're driving through Gorham and you get into a car accident, you're obviously not a property taxpayer, but it's an expense to the citizen, so we collect that fee, and I'm assuming that most of the people that don't pay their bills are people that don't live here, I'm assuming, so, or a good majority of them?
I, I don't know if that would be an accurate statement. I think it's across the board, different demographics, different insurance components. I would also dare say, and the chief could nod yes or no, that most of our revenue comes from EMS calls that are not motor vehicle accident-related, although we do have those. The bread and butter, as far as the service that we provide, 70% of, or more of the department's call volume is medical calls to residences or healthcare facilities, things like that.
Didn't really explain it, but...
Any other comments, questions? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? One, Gagnon. Sorry, six. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Seven yeas.